Well, once again, hello, good evening. But thank you all for being with us. This is really an important day for us and an important meeting with all of you. We're really anxious to share everything that we've been working on with you. I want to introduce Mike Formby here, sitting to my left, our managing director. And Michael's going to be with me for a bit when we go through our initial slides. But actually, tonight, what we have prepared for you is a presentation by a number of our directors. In fact, we'll have a minimum of eight of them from our cabinet coming up, talking about their various responsibilities, the things we've done, and the things that we're going to do, and what you can expect from us. So let me just start off by telling you that, you know, we call this our commitment to Chinatown. It's not a word that we use casually, and it's something we take to heart very much. And I hope that you'll see tonight in our comments, that commitment beginning to manifest itself. We've been in office now for just nearly 14 months. But we made a commitment to beautify, to revitalize, and improve the security in Chinatown. It was no small challenge and a very big promise that we expected to live around. So what I'd really like to do is if we could start the slide deck now and get you into it. Let me just say one other thing. We have a lot of information tonight. We've told our team we want this to be conversational. And so I'm not so sure we'll be done in an hour. We're not going to go on forever, but I just, you know, we want to give everybody on this call a chance to ask whatever questions they might have. We want to make sure we deliver the information that we've prepared for you. And given the number of people involved, I'm not so sure we can actually time that to an hour, but we'll get through it. So I'll introduce our department heads as they come up here one by one. But I do definitely want to introduce, we have three elected officials tonight on the phone. First of all, Carol Fukunaga, council member. Thank you so much for being on this call tonight. I believe that Senator Carl Rhodes is also on this call tonight. And Sean Hamamoto, who's representing Representative Dan Holt, I believe I saw on the call tonight. We're very grateful that the three of them have chosen to be on. And then the, what we're going to do is take you through a little bit of the history, the most recent history that we had been engaged in. And then we'll get into reports from our department heads. So next slide, please. You know, I had never run before for office before. And everybody said, well, you need to have to come up with something you believe in or something you can live up to in the way of a campaign statement. And that's where really, quite honestly, with my wife and I, Karen, you know, we talked about what we thought would be effective leadership. And really, quite honestly, it was very simple when we came to saying, it's not about us. It's about them. It's about you. And that statement, it's about you, is really designed to say, we're going to put an emphasis on our listening. You know, and from that, you know, we listened, we did a lot of research. And right before we got into the serious party election, we introduced our roadmap to recovery. And then getting into office, our 90-day roadmap. And one of the couple of things that we talked about was really improving communications between the city and the public. But more than anything, I wanted to be sure that we could drive economic development and revitalization. That was really important. So the fact of the matter is, when we looked at Chinatown and our challenge to beautify and revitalize and provide security, Chinatown came out and spoke really loudly. It was actually, for want of a better way to say, a primal scream. And let me show you what I mean by that. This is a piece of research that we did, that we participated in. It was done by Anthology in conjunction with American Savings Bank. And as you can see, you know, it took 10 responses and more for that to be highlighted. It was a large sample size. But when people were asked, you know, about the words that, you know, came up for them when they said Chinatown, as you can see across the bottom, the homeless was bigger than life, dirty was bigger than life, drugs, dangerous, scary. But the other blue word up there is home. The fact that it was home, and it was dirty, and the homeless were overrunning it, and it was scary and dangerous, and drugs. And if you look at all even the other words in there, none of them were very complimentary. I think there's one small word up there that somebody put fun. But for the most part, you know, that was its challenge unto itself. That was a top-of-mind awareness. That was the introduction, if you will, of the challenge that we were facing. Next slide. Okay, so one of the first things I really believe in, and it's a core belief with me, is that you really have to understand the problem before you start offering solutions. And so we agreed by great coincidence, a year ago today on February 23rd, to take our entire cabinet and do what amounted to was a three-hour walk through Chinatown. And we were joined in part by some of the representatives that I'll talk about in a minute. But this, this walkthrough was very eye-opening for us. Now, all of us had been down there, all of us had driven by. But we went down there looking specifically at what needed to be done and talking to representatives. So it was a year ago today, we saw the conditions firsthand. We spoke to a number of the businesses, a number of the residents. It was a really very worthwhile beginning. Next slide, please. And so we also met with members from downtown. And I really want to thank Ernest Carvalho, Toulon Schubert Quark, and Kevin Lai, who are people we spoke to at length. They were very informative to us, kind of almost as our guides, as we were looking at the various things that had to be done. And so that was the beginning for us. It was a month after we got into office. It was a year ago tonight. And what you're going to see in the ensuing slides now is we made a real firm commitment that each and every month, we would have certain milestones because we stayed focused on this. Commitment wasn't a one-time-only statement. This was an ongoing commitment, as it will be going into the future from tonight as well. Next slide, please. So it opened up with the state of the city address, which we delivered last year on March 15th. And in that, I made sure, and we kept our, we kept our state of the city pretty tight last year because we were in office for less than 60 months. And you know, we're still in the midst of the pandemic and everything else that was happening to us. But one of the things we wanted to make sure we said on record in the state of the city was our commitment to Chinatown. And the fact that even though promises had been made going back several mayors, we were fully aware at that point by March, what was left unfulfilled, what the scope of the challenge was, as we just shared with you, and then what we were going to do about it. But that statement, which I made on behalf of our administration, was done in the most serious way. Next slide, please. So we asked our city departments to, you know, draft the projects later that same night. On March 15th, Mike was sitting next to me, met with the Chinatown Lions Club, and went through our projects and our commitments in detail. Because at that point, we had actually, and I didn't get into it in the state of the city, but that's what we drew up in the way of understanding the problems. We started to work on what was the solutions, what we were going to offer the public. So next slide. So we're going to go through this a little bit. I'm not going to read it right now, but we did prepare an initial list of Chinatown commitments. We're going to go through all of that in detail in just a little bit. But that led to us in May, in the month of May, attending our First Neighborhood Board meeting. And unfortunately, we only had 10 minutes that night. And we went down there to address a standing-room-only crowd. And, but what we did do, because we only had the 10 minutes, was we presented two sheets of paper full of our intentions. And I walked out of that room that night, saying to everybody in that room, you can hold us accountable to this. It's too, we don't have enough time to spell it all out for you tonight, as we will in a few minutes. But you can hold us accountable because we felt very comfortable that we had developed that game plan based on everything we had seen, everything we had heard, and what would be our first foray into what was going to have to be an extended assault, if you will, on the challenges. But this was our first foray. Next, next slide. So in June, one of the things I'm really proud of is that, you know, Holly Viola, who had been talked about for a long time, they'd been on the drawing books for a long time. But that project was stuck. And we saw the need for affordable housing units in Chinatown. I want to thank Representative, Councilmember Fukunaga, who really helped us with this and what we went through. But we did get this off and going, and it's underway right now under construction. But we felt that that was a real breakthrough for openers, was to begin the construction of much-needed housing. And then, of course, you know, when you look at everything that was said on that word graph, you know, with respect to dangerous and scary, and the homeless overrunning it. You know, we got together with HPD and we developed our task force. We announced that in July. It was going to be 24 hours a day. And we drew up the parameters to Bishop Street, to North Baritania, to King Streets. It was going to be a 24/7 detail. And we thought that, you know, this was going to be our first step in to try to provide police enforcement to go right to this one thing that we knew was primal for everybody who worked down there, everybody who lived down there, and everybody who visited. And that was to make people feel safe. So then the Chinatown cleanup came along. And I will tell you, that was a really great experience for us that participated. It was organized by the Chinese Chamber of Commerce. I give them a lot of credit. We participated in it. I think what's of note in this particular picture is the blue bag on the right side of the screen, it was a bag that was done at Smith Baritania Park that was full of drug paraphernalia. And we actually ended up filling up most of that bag, which was pretty scary. I'm going to talk about Smith Baritania Park in a little bit. But what I really loved about that day was some 250-plus people had come out. And the joy that they had in walking around and through the streets, because we were out there with them, and picking up the place, and that, you know, we were now a month or so into having the police presence. The neighborhood had come together, outside people, the Chinese Chamber of Commerce, and just a lot of people that came together to help us try to clean up Chinatown. It was a very heartwarming experience. Next slide. In September, we made an appearance with Weed and Seed. Steve Arm had been in office for a bit, presented with Chief Radevannik. And Steve, we presented down there, we made a commitment of what we were going to do and the statements were, we're going to play tough on crime in Chinatown. Now, look, I want to tell you right now, crime is not one of those things that you can, you know, totally prevent. It sort of happens spontaneously, you know, even despite the police presence that we had down there. But we knew, we knew what we had to do, and they quickly began arresting people. We'll get into that detail a little bit right there. But we said, we're going to play tough, and we meant it, and we have been, we've been acting that way accordingly. And we'll share that with you. Okay, on October, after a lot of planning through all the previous months having been in office, because we inherited a homeless situation that, you know, was out of control, as you saw in that word graph, that was the biggest word on the page. It wasn't just in Chinatown, but it was significant in Chinatown. And we knew that this was something we definitely had to reach. But we knew from past experiences, because if I came into this job new to many things, there was a few areas I was really exposed to and really experienced. And one was the subject of homelessness. And we knew we needed a different strategy. And so, and I'm going to have Jim Ireland come up here in a little bit, and Anton Krucki, talk about our core outreach, response, and engagement. But this is a program that we're very excited about. And in this coming year, and I was two months into it, we expect to have great traction in removing our homeless people from the streets. But more importantly, treating them humanely and giving them the services they need. Next slide, Mike. Then we got to November, and we were able to get some grant money from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. It's a two-year project on organic waste. We think it's going to be very good. You know, we knew we had problems down in Chinatown on this very subject. We wanted to make that investment. We'll talk about that in a little bit with Matt Gonzo when he gets up here from our Office of Climate Change and Sustainability Resilience. Next slide, please. And then we, we extended the HPD enforcement task force. And we used, we used federal monies for this. But one of the things that we were really committed to was the public feeding had to stop in Chinatown. And this has been an ongoing dialogue and discussion for us for a number of months. But River of Life will happen to talk to you tonight about what's been accomplished there in a definitive way. And as you can see, we're also not only extending the police presence, but we're going to install security cameras. And we'll talk about that and get those off. Because some of those cameras in Chinatown, Chinatown have been broke for a very long time. So this has been an ongoing effort for us right now. But we're going to keep our law enforcement intact down there well into 2022. So what I'd like to do now, just as kind of an overview, is to bring up first of all, Laura Thiel from the Department of Parks and Recreation, to talk about on her slide deck what she's been able to get done. Ms. Laura Thiel.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us tonight. So the Department of Parks and Recreation made a commitment to work on the beautification aspect of Chinatown. Of the three commitments that we focused on, we're planting new hardier trees along the street areas, working on the pavers in the pedestrian malls. Many of them have been uplifted from the tree roots, and then making sure that the areas are clean. A lot of times, when you think of the Department of Parks and Recreation, don't, you think of a regular park. But we also have the Urban Forestry Program. So we manage all of the street trees on the island. This opens, there you go. So one of the reasons we were focusing on trees is we want to make sure that the area is inviting for people to come down and shop. And trees have been shown all over the continent and here in Hawaii to make areas more beautiful, more inviting, and also more pleasant. When we did the walkthrough, Mayor, it was in the middle of the summer. And people, every time we were on a street that had trees, everybody crowded into the shade. It was a lot more pleasant to walk there, to shop there. The streets that didn't have trees were much, much less pleasant. So we took a look at the different areas that were missing trees. We filled in some of the tree wells where they were too small, and then we knew the trees were going to survive. And we installed 44 new street trees, and then two large trees on Fort Street Mall. We also removed 11 diseased or defunct old trees. And unfortunately, a number of the trees were vandalized. So we've replaced eight of the vandalized trees, and then also the metal posts and the safety caps that had been removed. We are committed to an 18-month tree care to make sure that it increases the chances of survival. So we will continue to do ongoing tree maintenance and replacement where needed, but just making sure they get a good, healthy start. And we would really encourage the Chinatown merchants and other people to help us in this because, again, it's going to make your stores, your streets, more attractive for the shoppers to come down there. So we welcome your help.
Yeah, Laura, I don't want to interrupt you, but I want to underscore that point because it was very disheartening to get down there and see these trees broken off at the top. And some reactions even from some of the merchants because they didn't want to deal with the tree there. We're going to really need the cooperation from the community. If we're taking the time to develop those plans, to put the trees in there and everything else, we really need some help from the local community because we can't be there all the time doing that.
Thank you, Mayor. The other area we knew is the pedestrian malls. So we share Kuliana for the malls with our sister agency, the Department of Facilities Maintenance. And so we worked together to remove the pavers at the lower end of Fort Street Mall. We brought in our urban forestry and our arborists to cut the tree roots, leveled the area, and then put in new tree wells that were larger to help make sure that the trees had enough water and they wouldn't have to uplift the pavers in the future. What we're going to be doing is working on the next area in front of Walmart. We know that there's a lot of shoppers there. We're trying to get all of our supplies on island before we begin because we don't want to tear up the area and then leave it open while we're waiting for supplies to get on island. So we will be moving forward with that work next. And then lastly, was in addition, you know, to the malls and the parks in the area, maintaining them. So we repainted the yellow lines on Kekalike Mall in October, and they're scheduled to be repainted again in April because we know the paint fades with all the work there. And that's to stop the merchants from kind of encroaching into that public area. We do continue to clean the parks and malls on a regular schedule. The weekdays, our crews begin at 3:30 in the morning because we want to get stuff done before the merchants get out and go through noon. And on weekends, we have crews cleaning there, 6:30 in the morning to 3:00 P.M. in the afternoon. I know, Mayor, you mentioned the parks. The key to the parks is going to be to activate them. And there was a lot of work to activate parks pre-COVID. I was on the phone today at a working meeting with American Savings Bank and Trust for Public Land. We're restarting the activation plans that they had in place, working with our staff for Ala Park. We restarted the Adopt a Park program in our department this year. So we're going to be entering into an adopt-a-park agreement with Trust for Public Land and American Savings Bank. They want to schedule activities there on a regular basis. We're aiming for June because that would give them enough time to hire people to come in to do the scheduled activities. And nationwide, the thing that really gets people out into parks is having supervised activities because they feel more comfortable. We would dearly love to find a partner to do similar types of activation in Smith Baritania. And through that type of partnership with the community, we can have supervised activities there during certain days, and that's going to really help with the environment there. We do, I'm sorry, the last thing is, we have scheduled security to lock the gates for Smith Baritania at night, and that has helped reduce the problem. But again, the activation is going to be the key to really making the difference during the daytime.
Yeah, you know, I got an email, I don't know if Orrin's on the call from Orrin Schleeman, once said, you know, it's not a park, it's a drugstore. And I pointed out earlier about the, the bag of drug paraphernalia that we filled up there. We're very aware of that, and it's such an incredible place. And when we talk about activating, it could be such a great, a great place for people to enjoy, relax, play, if you will, there. We're very aware of that park and what we want to do along with Ala. And you're going to hear a little bit about what we're going to do at Sun Yat-Sen as well. So we're very focused on that. Is there anything else, Laura, you want to add? Okay, that's great. Again, everything you're going to hear tonight is the beginning of what we've done and what we're about to do and will continue to do. So thank you, Laura. Great job. I want to bring up Roger Morton, who's in charge of our transportation services and our cabinet. Talk a little bit about what we're going to do vis-à-vis the buses and bus stops and everything else. Go ahead, Roger.
Hello, hi, everybody. Yes, I'm Roger Morton of Transportation Services. Just a little bit about what our department does. We provide, we provide mobility. We provide mobility to the entire island. But particularly, we focus our mobility on Chinatown. We operate the city bus service, we operate the handy vans, and we'll be operating rail in, within about a year's time. We also have other, other functions in our department that are transportation-related. We operate six municipal parking lots in Chinatown. We operate all the meter parking in Chinatown. We're going to be making improvements to both our meter parking and to our Chinatown lots. We are, we're making some improvements to our Kekalike Street Mall. We're making some big-time improvements in stormwater management. And we're, and we're doing it. But let me talk a little bit about our mobility programs too, for our buses. I spent a long time running Oahu Transit Services and very familiar with Chinatown services we have. If you go out anywhere close in, Palolo, Kalih, anywhere, and you get out there about 9:00, 10:00 o'clock in the morning, it seems like rush hour on the buses. And that's, those are, in large part, those are folks that are going to Chinatown to go to the markets in Chinatown, to buy, to have commerce. And that's a little bit about what we're, we're trying to do. And we focus on a lot of service to Chinatown. We have over 50 bus routes that traverse the Chinatown area, and they bring in, and we run more than 2,000 daily bus trips. So that's a big commitment on our part for that. That's going to be substantially changed as we get our Honolulu Rail Transit System into Chinatown and beyond, into downtown and beyond. And one of the things that we are planning in Chinatown is we're planning the Chinatown Rail Station, which will be something that respects the cultural values of Chinatown people. It'll be a really iconic rail station that will really do it. And that's where our Kekalike project is, that's going to be the gateway for us. That's the gateway to Chinatown for us along Kekalike. So we're doing some things that, that really aren't in our comfort zone totally, but we're, we're going to work with the merchants on Kekalike. We're going to improve the mall there. So from a, from a drainage point of view, there's a lot of flooding that goes on right now on Kekalike Street. On our Chinatown, on our Chinatown parking areas, we're making improvements. We're planning the improvements this time. We've sought out a 10-year contract for our operation with our concessions to run it. The reason why we went to 10 years is because we're expecting our, our new concessionaires, our parking lot operators, to put money into our, into our garages, to put money to improve security, to improve the, just the look and the feel of the parking lots that we have in Chinatown, and we have six. So those are, those are things that we're doing. Others, others that we've, we've tried to do, we're going to be making some bus improvements. We're going to be improving connectivity to Chinatown from Palolo and from Kalih. That's going to be, I think, something that you'll see in the next six months, that we are working with our partners and with our HoloCard. And we're going to try to promote limited amount of visitors coming to Chinatown so we can have better commerce. And I think better commerce can lead to just a better environment for, for all of us on this island. It's exciting time for us, and we look forward to making these improvements over the next year and a half.
Did you talk about the hotels at Bethel and the bus stops?
Well, Hotel and the, the Hotel Street is the only transit mall we have. And we've been putting money into improving all of our bus stops so that they're ADA compliant. The, the, the one at Hotel in Bethel is frankly, it's a model bus stop. It's a, it's a pretty little bus stop shaded by a tree. And we're very proud of all the bus stops that we have along Hotel Street.
All right, Roger. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate that. Again, all the directors are going to be available for questions. I'd like to bring up Alex Kozlov, who actually is our director in charge of design and construction. That's all the big projects. But we also have made Alex from the beginning. I asked him if he would take on the responsibility of being sort of our point person, which he agreed to do. So he has an added responsibility when it comes to Chinatown because I said, we need somebody here who can, you know, be the champion of making sure all of these various activities get done. So with that, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy to be here, glad to see everybody that I can see. DDC, Department of Design and Construction, is responsible for kind of the bigger, larger projects that take a long time to design and build. They're also designed to last a long time, which requires a different level of oversight and commitment on our engineers. And what you're seeing on this particular slide are the four projects that were on our radar screen a year ago, represents about $15 million worth of work. A street rehab project in design and construction that we've completed, one that's on the books that will start next year, and then two projects with the, with the Chinatown Police Department. This is the, kind of the status of the projects, the rehabilitation of streets. There's 12 streets that we rehabbed and the...
What does that mean, Alex? You say we've rehabbed 12 streets. What does that mean?
So we resurfaced and reconstructed the asphalt pavements. We adjusted the manholes, constructed bus pads, did new sidewalks, cut up trees, removed some stumps. So basically, what you saw from the, from curb to curb were new streets. Also included in this particular project were curb extensions along Palaki Street, as you've seen with the permeable pavers and the bollards. And this project is substantially complete. We've got some punchless items left, and I'll admit right now that there are two bollards on Palaki Monique that are not installed yet. That is not part of this project. Those were, that was malfeasance and vandalism that was, that we need to repair. But we've taken a different look at that. We're going to repair those in a more permanent fashion, not put them back the way they were. We're going to take a much longer, more permanent repair, and that, that requires a redesign and a change order, which is why they're still not done. That work, though, will commence in March, should complete in a couple of months. On, on the, on deck is a rehab of Hotel Street. That's a little bit more challenging than asphalt curb-to-curb. That's a concrete street with, with bus stops and a whole lot of other challenges in terms of utilities. We're in the planning and design phase of that now. Should be bidding that in about a year and a half or so, and, and go on with that. The two projects for the Chinatown Police Station, security cameras, that's an interesting project because what we originally wanted to do in that was just replace the cameras that were there. Replace the camera equipment that was in the, in the police station and kind of just replace what was already there. But we've since taken a look at it with, with a little bit more high-tech solution and the cooperation of many of the people in this room. A DIT solution, a much more modern kind of solution, using leveraging whatever technology is out there in terms of safety and security. That is something that's in the, in the near planning stages. We'll be, I'm sure, installing something in that respect sometime this year.
Well, I think it's going to aid greatly with the police work. And at the end of the day, I'm going to say it again, more than anything, on a very base level, we want people to feel safe in Chinatown because clearly they don't. And we need to do everything possible to make that happen.
And just, just one little add to that. There are 26 cameras with there right now. That's not sufficient. We, we feel that we can add more cameras, probably if we can, one on every intersection is the, is the goal for that particular project. Next project, they're with us specifically with the Chinatown HPD Station itself, some energy and service upgrades with the HVAC system. It's a historical building. We're considering installing PV if it's legal, photovoltaic system on there if it's legal, and then automate the, the air conditioning and the, and the systems in there to be a little bit more energy efficient. Mayor, I'd like to finish with Sun Yat-Sen Memorial Park. That is a project that's, that's going to restart in March. What you'll see in this particular park is, is a facelift plus. The statue of Sun Yat-Sen will be the premier aspect of the park. It'll be relocated into the center of park on a, on a very fancy granite plinth in the middle. It'll have a, it'll be the centerpiece of the park. It'll have uplights and, and emphasis for that. There is currently an ornamental fence that's around the park that is complete. We're going to make that a little bit more robust by securing that a little bit on the northwest side. And then new landscaping, irrigation system, and, and new light poles all throughout the park. Uh, and then new landscaping, new irrigation system and, uh, and new light poles all throughout the park. Uh, that project will start immediately in March and complete by the end of the year, hopefully before the end of the year.
You know, from a common sense standpoint, I've never understood, I mean, that the fact that they have a park named after great man Sunyat Sen and everything that he represents and the legacy of connection between Hawaii and, and, and Taiwan. And, and, and the statue is put in the back of the park. And, you know, you, and they have a statue of him as well, and it's just been sort of the emphasis, it just didn't make any sense. So along with the cleanup and everything else we're gonna do, I think we're gonna pay the proper homage, if you will, to, to that man and really quite honestly is a source of pride for Chinatown. So I, I'm, I'm excited about that happening.
Yeah, the, the renderings I've seen make it pretty darn fancy.
Yeah, and, and, you know, and being adjacent to the theater and everything, it's just, you know, it's visually, I, I think that's part of what we're concerned about. We're talking about beautifying, this is, there's a lot of elements going on here, long overdue. And I think it's gonna be dramatic for people down there. So.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good lucks. Thank you. You can absolutely be available for any questions we have. Let me bring up Scott Hayashi from the Department of Land Management. Department of Land Management has everything to do with the buildings that we own down there. And, and, and we know what challenge in that regard, but I want you to hear from Scott and you take us through it.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, good evening. Scott Hayashi, Director of Department of Land Management. Thank you for joining us. Department of Land Management, we're proud to be part of the mayor's team, committed to improvement of Chinatown. Part of what DLM does is we oversee twenty-two affordable housing projects, five of which are in Chinatown. So I would like to, um, to see the slide there. I'm gonna move to the next slide, it has more, a little bit more detail. Okay, so I'd like to just talk about actually the projects that we're currently overseeing, the five projects in Chinatown. Some of, um, what we've accomplished and what we plan to do. That were Chinatown Gateway Plaza. For that project, we've already completed drain repairs, security camera upgrades and upgrades of the fire panels. As you know, you know, there's a lot of challenges with these properties, um, the least of which to mention is their, the age of these properties. You know, they're, um, these projects are old, uh, there's a lot of maintenance issues. So we try to respond as quickly as possible and address them immediately. So I'm gonna go over and just kind of tell you what we've done, uh, real quickly and what we're gonna, what we're gonna do for these projects. Ongoing for Chinatown Gateway Plaza, we've got roof repairs, structural repairs, waterproofing and upgrade of the mechanical systems. These are large projects, uh, require a lot of, um, detailed work, um, and oversight. But we plan to complete these projects by the end of twenty twenty-three. Harbor Village, completed elevator upgrades and modernization, um, drain line repairs and repairs to various units. Ongoing, we're gonna repair the deck, HM area, we're gonna repaint the buildings. Um, and these projects are gonna be completed by the summer of twenty twenty-three. Marin Tower, we've completed upgrade of the fire sprinkler systems, drain lines, um, heat pumps and installation of new security cameras. Ongoing roof repairs, repairs to the recreation deck and planner box, walkways and waterproofing, repairs to the drainage system. Projected completion date for these projects is April of twenty twenty-three. Replacement of the chillers are currently in the planning phase. Chinatown Manor, completed painting the entire project. Ongoing general maintenance and repairs for the common areas and the various units. Winston Holly, completed new security room with installation of additional security cameras. Uh, repaired the ADA wheelchair lift, upgraded the courtyard furniture and improved the landscaping. Ongoing, we're renovating twenty-three units, replacing the shower pans, waterproofing, patching, painting, replacing kitchen cabinets, new flooring, installing new toilets. Projected completion is the end of this year. So as you can see, we're, we're very active with these projects, getting them, uh, safe and, um, making, making sure that the residents have a safe environment. So another thing is we work with the property managers to rent over seven hundred fifty of these affordable units. Our occupancy rate across these projects averages ninety percent. So as you can see, we have a high occupancy. Our goal is to get as many people into these units as possible. Also, we've housed approximately fifty people transitioning out of homelessness through our HUDFAS, um, program or through Housing First vouchers. So we work closely with the, these, um, program providers, service providers. Uh, we've also assisted tenants with obtaining rental relief, um, in twenty twenty-one, close to two hundred thousand dollars. DLM, um, started the negotiations with the River of Life to relocate, um, their feeding operations out of Chinatown. Um, granted to some challenges, but, um, I'd like to turn it over to, to Mayor to maybe report on the, the success that.
Well, look, I mentioned at the beginning, we knew that the feeding services were a real problem. You know, River of Life had been there for thirty-five years and, you know, so not to be coy about this, we held a press conference a couple of weeks ago purposely and had Ram Watermole up there talking about their leaving Chinatown. So I want to bring up Anton Krucki. If you will, Anton, why don't you come on up here? Because you're such a primary architect and, and negotiator. And we'll give you an update on where we are because the one thing I regretted, not so much regretted about the press conference was we, at that point, had not defined the date of departure, but I did say it would be sooner rather than later. And it was the first time, for what it's worth, that they agreed to go on a press conference, to go in front of the public. So we knew we were serious. We knew we'd made the inroads. I can tell you, we had ongoing negotiations with them throughout the year. I can't tell you how many times we came to handshake agreements, only to have something amended, changed and move back to almost square one. It was a battle of perseverance, but we understood and we understand the impact of that feeding facility on what it creates in Chinatown. So Anton, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, we do know that the impact that it has. I've spoken to so many, uh, members of that community that have, that have really told us, shown us pictures, articulated it, daily emails about it, so we understand it. We needed to, to structure a deal with them that, that could work and we ran into some, some problems like that. That's what Scott said. But we stayed with it and we struck a deal with them where they're now going to move to other campuses and other parts of the island to, to really fulfill their mission. So we still will be working with the Resource Center of the city, we'll own that. But they made a, uh, uh, last night, they had a board meeting and with the unanimous vote, they said, March thirty-first will be when the feeding will stop. So on or before March thirty-first.
So we want to hold that and tell you guys, tell you folks tonight, but that's breakthrough we were hoping for. We needed a defined date. We knew it would be in March. admittedly, it's the last day of March. Maybe it'll be a couple of days sooner, we'll see. But that's going to happen. And I think that is more than just significant. And I don't want to overstate anything, but we've looked at that situation very closely. You're gonna hear it a little bit from HPD as well. We know the source of a lot of problems. So, um, we're really excited about that. And at the same time, uh, I'm gonna bring up Jim Ireland in a second and talk a little bit more about Core and our outreach and what we're doing with some of these people, uh, and, and, and what we anticipate is gonna happen.
Thank you.
Is that it? Okay. Anton, thank you. Scott, you want to come back up first and we'll bring up Jim to talk about Core? You're gonna do it with Chris? Okay, we'll hold, okay, we'll just hold it in the veins. We have Trisha talk, LaChica, Housing and Homelessness. I'm sorry, Trish. Go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to touch on a couple more points. As Mayor mentioned, Halevaolu, we're excited about that. It's progressing, uh, moving forward. Uh, we continue to meet with the developer, um, quarterly formal meetings, but we talk to them monthly. Um, they're putting piling into ground now and it looks like completion date, uh, looks like summer of twenty twenty-three. So we're very excited about that and we'll make sure to update everyone on the progress. Uh, last, I'd like to close by saying that we're, you know, we're committed, um, with the administration is committed to improving Chinatown. We want to revitalize Chinatown. Uh, part of what DLM will be doing is putting out an RFB for a, um, culture and arts, um, facility within the Chinatown Gateway Plaza. Uh, some of the commercial spaces, so we're excited about that. We're gonna revitalize the area, um, arts and culture and, you know, we're, we're hope to see, um, attracting many, many people coming to, to Chinatown. So that's, that's.
Yeah, in a little bit, we're gonna bring up Makinani Sala to talk about it because she's our Director of our Cultural Affairs Office with some of the activities. Laura Thielin said earlier about activating the parks, you know, getting people, getting humanity in there, which is also part of the reason why we're sensitive to the housing, you know, and even for that matter, and the extension we can possibly create in a building with more affordable rental units there. Uh, and moving in, if you will, humanity and activity that has a lot to do with energizing and revitalizing a place. We know that and we're very directed in those efforts to make that happen, okay? Because that will make a significant difference. And you know, Scott?
That's it.
All right. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm gonna ask Dawn Subcheck to come up now. And Dawn's in charge of our facilities and maintenance and this is a lot of the, you know, one of the better way to say it, the beautification and the cleaning and everything else. So Dawn?
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us tonight. Um, just wanted to highlight first off that Department of Facility Maintenance, also known as DFM, is responsible for the, um, ma- repair, maintenance and cleaning of all city facilities and public areas that are parks. Um, so that being said, this slide kind of highlights, um, DFM's commitments, uh, that was outlined in April of twenty twenty-one. Coupled, um, so we had to adjust our operations to support these commitments as well as Mayor's laser focus on improving Chinatown. Coupled with the, uh, men and women who work for DFM who are dedicated to taking care and restoring, um, Chinatown to a local attraction, we were able to meet and exceed some of these, uh, commitments.
Yeah.
Okay, so this, this slide outlines all the different things that we cover. Um, I just wanted to itemize all the different tasks that, uh, DFM covers on, mostly on a day-to-day basis. Wanted to highlight there that we have increased sidewalk power washing to three times a week instead of two times a week. Um, we've also, uh, worked with HFD and some, uh, community people to also, uh, spot sanitize some areas as needed, pending resource availability. But just recently, we worked with, uh, Gregory Dunn of the Hawaii Theater to clean some spaces in front of his, um, Hawaii Theater, um, and making that a nice, uh, approachable place, uh, for his events. Um, we've also, um, we've also completed a bunch of CIP projects, a couple of CIP projects in response to some odor issues related to the area. Uh, we've put in some new technologies to prevent, um, larger debris or larger trash from going into the storm drain system, making it better for everyone who's living in that area. Uh, we've also worked with, uh, and partnered with some community groups. Uh, we've also repaired some sidewalks and some storm drains, as you can see there. Uh, having to, you know, to concentrate our focus, our efforts on this area. We also pulled some of our staff from other base yards to make sure that we take care of Chinatown, uh, as a primary. So, um, that outlines kind of what we do on a day-to-day basis. Hopefully this highlights what DFM, um, uh, takes care of throughout, um, throughout Chinatown. But this, this slide here kind of shows, in addition to this, the services that we want to continue, this outlines what we want to continue in twenty twenty-two and beyond. So we're gonna work with DPR to make sure that the repairs along Port Street Mall are complete. We do have a couple of CIP projects to repair damaged.
CIP stands for Capital Improvement Project and DPR is Parks and Recreation. Just so we know, we have a tendency in the city to talk in alphabet language. As well, I'm sure everybody understands, but, uh, because you can see now, there's even some more directors coming up, how integrated this has to be because of how the city operates and why the departments themselves, it's really a collaborative effort. Because in order to get something done, in some cases, it takes almost every one of these directors in a given area to solve what looks like a simple problem.
Yes, that's Mayor.
Yeah.
Yes, so thank you for that clarification. So we do have some projects outlined, uh, to repair catch basins and then also to, um, install some new technologies as far as storm drain systems go to make sure that we keep large debris, large trash from going into the storm drain system and, you know, the benching clogs and, and flooding and stuff. So, um, we also seek to replace old light fixtures with LED lights. Um, we do have some work orders in place for some, uh, repair of sidewalks this year. And we wanted to highlight that we do have some potential to work with the community, um, through our Malama Okaaina and Stormwater Quality Community Events. Um, I think we participated in the large Chamber of Commerce, uh, event this last year. Um, but we have also worked with council member, um, Fukunaga, um, the Lions Club, um, and so, in doing some community events. Um, so we want to make sure that we integrate closely with the community, um, doing, doing group effort to making sure that we improve Chinatown. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor.
Is that it?
That's it.
We'll have you back up because I, I think there's gonna be a couple of questions about that, but thank you. And I appreciate the pictures too. Uh, look, I don't have to tell you folks, and it's already, it's evident that, you know, place was in disrepair. You know, almost overwhelmingly. And the hardest part for me in this job is a sense of responsibility at the same time, operating with a sense of urgency. But understanding for a while that we just can't make things happen automatically. So hopefully what you're getting right now is things we're doing, things are in process and things we're gonna do. Uh, but there's so much to be done, but we're committed to that. Uh, and I just hope that you're embracing the fact that we're, we're just, we're going at it as best we can, especially in facilities and maintenance because there's a lot of upkeep after years and years of neglect. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trisha LaChica, who's our Executive Director of Housing and Homelessness, to come up and talk a little bit about what we're doing and at the same time afterwards, I'm gonna bring up Jim Ireland to talk a little bit about our core outreach program and what we're getting done.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Trish LaChica. I am the new, um, Executive Director for the Office of Housing and Homelessness. Um, tomorrow will be my one month joining this administration. Um, we are the mayor's office of housing and homelessness. So our responsibility is, um, to oversee the development of policies and programs and really all coordinate the functions and activities that, um, uh, relate to housing and homelessness. These are two of Mayor's, you know, top three priorities. And this is very, uh, you know, a clear priority for the administration. As Mayor mentioned earlier, with the word, with the, the word cloud that, um, was shown, that crime and homelessness are, you know, real issues and challenges, um, experienced by the community. We also know and have heard just the fatigue that, that, um, you know, that surrounds experiencing these challenges every day. So provide some updates to you on the initiatives that have been spearheaded, uh, uh, in the Chinatown community, beginning with the Weed and Seed Program. So Weed and Seed is really an initiative of the, uh, City Prosecutor's, uh, Steve Ang's office, which he really started back in nineteen ninety-seven and ran for about three years. It's a federal program where, really successful, where they really saw a reduction in, um, felony and misdemeanors over about seventy percent. And we are, yeah, after my presentation, we're going to hear from Chief Fannick, um, and Major, the Major on, uh, the statistics since we relaunched the program in July twenty twenty-one. And those numbers aren't near as high as the numbers we experienced, uh, with crime in the, in the late nineties. So what this tells us is really that what we're experiencing in Chinatown is not a major crime issue, but really a public health issue. We know that the individuals who are there are experiencing, you know, complex challenges with mental health and, um, substance use disorders. And that's something that this program, um, prioritizes, removing, you know, crime away from the area, but also identifying unique programs and services. Um, one of them, which I'm really excited about is this partnership with, um, the State Department of Health's Hawaii Cares Program. And what it does is it's really, uh, uh, an opportunity to fast track, you know, those who have been charged to receive treatment and, um, receive assessment and then treatment and rehabilitation. To us, this is very important because we don't want folks, um, being released and, uh, and back into the community and going back into homelessness or going back into, um, into prison. And so I think for us, um, we were committed to continue supporting, um, the, the, the program as needed. The next point is very important because it's also in partnership with the City Prosecutor's Office is really, how do we know we're successful, right? And what, um, they did through a partnership with American Savings Bank and the Trust for Public Lands is they, um, did this very comprehensive, very engaging community survey throughout Chinatown and the surrounding areas. Um, more than four hundred twelve surveys were collected. There were other focus groups, um, for, and as well as additional community surveys. Um, and the, these result, we have, um, the bullet points of the, the survey produced by Anthology, um, and can provide, provide that to you. But the full report will be on the Trust for Public Lands website in March. And so what it is, is it captures the baseline data. Where are we at now? How do the community members, how do the business owners feel? How do they perceive as the main issues and problems in Chinatown? And there will be a second round, so two years from now to kind of capture and measure, we're, you know, um, uh, those, those same questions. And so some of the highlights were that the major areas of concern, you know, are the folks who remain unsheltered. That's eighty-five percent of respondents named that as a major concern, the lack of public restrooms. It was mentioned earlier in a call, um, with, um, uh, Director Thielen was that we only have one public restroom and that's the one that's in Ala Park, um, and as well as crime and violence. And so we do know though, that for the folks who live in that area, that it is such a valuable, um, part of our history. In the late, you know, early nineteen hundreds, it was part of an ancient fish pond. It was a gathering place for different, um, ethnic, um, groups. They came together, they had baseball league. Um, it was a train station stop. They came together, they had baseball league, um, it was a train station stop. And it was also a place where they gathered for political activity. And so not a lot of, how do we revitalize this? How do we bring this back to and, and honor its past history? But we also know that, you know, it is a um, almost a seven-acre city-managed park. We know that it is underutilized, but we also know that um, over eighteen thousand people live within a ten-minute walk of that park. And we want to see it activated as uh, Director Thielen mentioned. So we will continue to work um, with um, Department of Parks and Recreation, but also with the Trust for Public Lands to ensure that this can be not just a model that's successful in Chinatown, but a model that we can replicate throughout other parks um, uh, on Oahu. The next is really about community engagement. And so as mentioned, I mentioned earlier, you know, the, the cabinet members and directors have really participated in just one-on-one talks and, and, and with business owners and residents in the area. We too have participated. I participated um, last Thursday with the community policing team um, during our outreach in getting uh, our residents experiencing um, homelessness sheltered. And we were able to get them sheltered through the Honu program. Um, there are also through the Office of Economic Revitalization Walk. So tomorrow, you know, they've already reached um, out to about ninety-four uh, business owners, just to inform them, you know, we, these are all the city resources that are available, the rental and utility relief fund, um, the micro loans program, and we will engage in the same level of participation as well. The Office of Housing intends to ingre- engage, you know, at the district level with each of the different communities. Um, I know Director Crucky has been to almost all of the neighborhood boards, just listening and, and getting and, and uh, listening and being able to plan for how we can um, do things better. Um, the last is really um, mentioned already, our continued engagement of Ala Park. And the last is, which I'm really excited about because I come from a public health and healthcare background, is CORE. So CORE stands for Crisis Outreach Response and Engagement. And this is really very unique, but it, because it's the first time in history that the cities, the, the city administration and the Mayor's Office is really providing a direct response to homelessness. We're treating it as a public health crisis, as a housing crisis. And we want to be, this is really a rapid, you know, mobile response unit that's able to reduce the burden on our law enforcement when they get the nine-one-one calls, but also reduce the burden on our emergency rooms. It's not a solution and we, you know, to be, to, to just um, to be able to um, bring folks to the ER. And so, you know, we're very excited. Um, I'm, uh, I'm going to call up um, Director Crucky to talk a little bit about how this was um, developed. And then also um, direct uh, Dr. Jim Ireland to talk about the current operations and how we're going to expand. Because the goal is, um, right now we're focused in Chinatown. Um, we're slowly expanding to East Honolulu. So this week, every day, they're also at uh, Moiliili and doing outreach there, but um, the goal is to be able to expand the service throughout the um, entire island. So.
Okay, no, come on up, Anton. And thank you, Trish. Really well done. Look, we recognize, if we go back to that words about scary and homeless being the first thing, you know, we understand the significance of this. And so we've already disclosed to you River of Life is moving. We have other plans for the other feeding organization as well and what that's gonna affect. But I want Anton to tell you, I, I can tell you that I know that if we um, and you're gonna hear this now on, on, on addressing homelessness, if we can, we take that element out, uh, it's going to be sig- more than significant. Go ahead, Anton.
So I want to talk about the Road to CORE. So Executive Director Lachica, thank you for grabbing me up to tell this history piece. So when we did the walk around Chinatown, I ended up engaging one of the businessmen, Don Murphy. And he, and he asked me, he says, do you know about cahoots up in Oregon? And I said, no, I don't, but I will. And so that embarked on a, on a research around the country of different programs. And then we said, we want to do that here. I want to have a direct uh, response. We already had HPD, we had community policing teams and we had service providers. But we knew it wasn't enough. Everybody needs help and we want to do more. So when we looked across those different programs, I also was challenged with, there was no budget. So we, we looked at the uh, American Relief Plan coming in. We thought it would be July. We really didn't get it till the end of August, September. But we, so we decided to take that time and thoughtfully plan the process. And so we put together a team of, we had the city uh, folks and different directors and departments, HPD. We had two individuals from the Department of Health and, and the Homeless Department from the states. We had state uh, executives at a city table designing a city program. Right? We had business leaders in that group. And then we also had two individuals that experienced homelessness, right? And so we, we were able to try to understand the problem. One of the things that was significant though, was in the other cities, they just funded a service provider. So it just is another program, right? We wanted to be much more than this. The mayor wanted to be much more than this. And we decided it could be a city program. And if we did that, not only would we put the resources in it, we could control it. And we could, we could up the amperage if we needed to, adjust it where we wanted to, and maybe even change some of the design points as we go forward in treatment and everything else in the continuum of engagement. And so it really is a significant program in the United States, one of the few that a city directly manages, right? And so that's the way that we can, we can take some of these situations, we can do market segmentations, we can do community segmentations, and we address a problem in a scalable way. And so, you know, CORE is, CORE is with us now. We got the money in September, we did a soft launch in October. But I have to tell you that the plans that are coming together, the ramp up that Dr. Ireland's doing in emergency services. You know, my, my, my dream and vision for CORE really was we have emergency services, right? We have our, our water safety division in emergency services and we have CORE addressing the problem. And I think you'll be as excited as I am when you hear Dr. Ireland talk about the experiences he has and the things that he's gonna do.
Yeah, thank you. And that's excellent. Look, you know, I started to say that um, we've got homelessness throughout our island. We all know that. And we have issues in Waikiki. And we're talking tonight specifically about Chinatown. And we've made that our focus since we're launching and initiating a lot of this before we even begin to spin, spin out. But we know what the numbers are down there and, and we think there's a very scalable problem. So our expectations are very high now as we begin to execute this plan. So I'll turn it over to Jim.
Thanks, Mayor.
Dr. Jim Ireland.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jim Ireland. I'm a physician. I'm the Director of Emergency Services. And traditionally, our department has dealt with um, emergency services, the ambulance and ocean safety, the lifeguards. Um, but when I started going to these meetings with the other city teams, um, we really realized together that homelessness was um, very, obviously very complicated, but there was a strong, strong medical component and especially mental health and um, substance abuse. Um, so that's how our department got involved and, and got in with the birth of CORE. Um, it's a multi-disciplinary team. So we have emergency medical technicians, people with experience in EMS on the streets and ambulances. We have community health workers, many of whom went through the training at Kapilani Community College. Um, we have a social worker, we're hiring a psychiatrist. Um, we've been authorized six nurse practitioners. So right now we have seventeen people, and this is building this from ground up, from zero just over the last few months. Um, we have a, a red shirt that we wear when we're out and about, so very recognizable. Um, making a lot of um, connections in Chinatown, learning the landscape. But it's, it's overwhelming to, to, to just look at this and say, wow, how are we gonna take care of this, you know? Um, I mean, you're just tripping over people sometimes on Hotel Street and River Street. But the team is up for the challenge and we are gonna solve this one person at a time. And I think by this summer, um, as our team grows and we're engaging more people, um, you're gonna see major, major changes where you're gonna look down these streets and not seeing anybody lying there, is my goal. Now, the other thing that CORE is doing on the backend, on the front end, they're engaging people. They're, they're learning why people are homeless. They're getting them connected to treatment, getting them connected to providers. They're actually giving people housed. Um, but the backend of CORE, the folks kind of in the back office, they're um, liaisoning with all the other providers in the community that are already doing this, the nonprofits, other city agencies, state agencies. And I think this will be the nucleus that ties all of this together. Because to some degree right now, there's a lot of people working very hard, but somewhat it's in silos um, where the left hand doesn't always know where the right hand is, is, is doing. And that's just really not acceptable because it's not working. We know the previous approaches to homelessness, going back years and years and years, have not worked because look where we are. So this is a new approach. We think we're gonna have great success. Um, I do ask though for some patience because um, this is not something that's gonna get fixed overnight. But I think by this summer, um, there's gonna be major, major changes in Chinatown. And that's where we're focusing ninety-five percent of our efforts right now. The other communities are asking, what about us? Can you come here? Can you come there? So on a case-by-case basis, we are going to some other communities. We're not, you know, looking the other way on any place on the island. But right now, our focus is in Chinatown because we feel if we can um, hone our craft there, be successful in Chinatown, then we can use that model to move to the other parts of the island where we know homelessness is as well. And then recreate the successes we're.
Yeah, and, and it comes right back though to the core word I said when we started this whole thing, which was commitment. And so we didn't want to really start to do this anywhere else. So in some cases, we may be learning a little bit and evolving. And as Anton said, you know, we have been planning this for quite some time and evaluating other programs and how we wanted to implement ours. But we needed money to do that. There was nothing in the budget. And we, as it was our first year, we took over a deficit budget. So we had to create that. And unfortunately, it took a while to get that federal money. It was delayed more than we wanted it to be. It was frustrating for us. But those monies are now in place. I think, Jim, you might say that by the end of the year, we expect to have fifty people.
Yeah.
Fifty people, probably four ambulances, uh, a number of other vehicles. We're also working on places. Maybe you could talk about that a little bit, on where we want to take people, about a little bit of a Punoai and everything else. Because we've got to be able to take these people places.
You know, the, the unfortunate thing with homelessness is there is a profound mental illness in many, many people who are homeless. And um, they're easy to see, they're yelling and screaming, sometimes doing scary and dangerous things, um, sexual acts, um, lashing out. Um, and it's unfortunate because these folks need treatment. They need medical attention. Um, we don't want them to go into criminality and in, into jail. We want to give them therapy and treatment. And so one of the problems is right now, if someone's severely mentally ill, EMS is involved and we take them to the ER. If they're in a, um, acute danger to themselves, the hospital will commit them and keep them in the hospital, in the psychiatric unit of the hospital. But if they're not quite that sick, a lot of times they're released from the ER and they just walk right back to, if they're downtown, right back into Chinatown. And so these are the, the folks that um, that are, that are not sick enough to be committed into the hospital, they end up back out on the streets. We really want to focus on them. And we want to start treatment in the streets if needed. And we want to take them to uh, maybe a city-affiliated clinic, um, or even city-owned clinic to do our treatment um, for them there. And that's why we're bringing, you know, a psychiatrist on the team and um, nurse practitioners um, with expertise in mental health. And one of the potentials is at the Punoai Rest Stop in Ibele. Um, there's a clinic already there. It's brand new. And uh, we, we may, may be using that to take people rather than the ERs. And then from that clinic, we can place them directly wherever they're gonna be placed, rather than just returning them back to the sidewalk. Because that cycle, ER sidewalk, ER sidewalk, ER streets, it's just, it's just not working. It's repetitive. And it really doesn't do anybody good. And it wastes a lot of time for the ambulances.
That's right. So this just really addresses a systemic problem. So anything else, Jim?
No, but if you see the, the folks in the red shirts in Chinatown, tell them hi. If you want to point out um, people that you're concerned about, um, you know, have at it. But um, we're growing, we're getting to know people in the community. We thank you for your support. We thank the Mayor and his administration for their support. And this, this is a all-hands-on-deck for us at the city. You know, the other directors and I and our departments are working with synergy. Um, we're excited. We have a, a, a task and a goal. And we're gonna succeed. Um, and we are gonna succeed. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity. And uh, thanks, thanks. Um, you know, I, I wish we were here in person.
Nice. But I just want to reiterate what you asked of this group, and that is a little bit of patience, okay? This has been decades in the making. You all know that. You live there, you work there, you care about that place. You know, but we're gonna get this done. We're off to a really strong beginning. I like our strategy. And we're about to execute it. We're already beginning to execute it. You just have to understand it's a work in progress, but we'll get there. Thank, anything else, Jim?
You know, just on a personal note, you know, I was at the theater there um, on Bethel on uh, Saturday and it was great. Um, my family's bought vegetables in Chinatown for every Saturday for years and years and years. I used to buy fire, fireworks there when they were legal, um, twenty-five, thirty years ago. So I love going to Chinatown. I love visiting there and I want it safe just like everybody else does. Thank you.
Well said. Yeah, I'm gonna bring up, we have two more departments to go through. And the next one is a very important one. And they've been great partners for us and that's HPD. And I've asked Chief, Chief uh, Radavannak to be here first. And then we're gonna bring up Major Calvin Sung after Chief speaks to you. But honestly, you know, we wanted the police to help us with, with the crime elements, but not be the tip of the spear on the homeless situation, which is what they had been before. And we really wanted to be able to address the things that make people feel safe. So with that, right from the beginning, when he became interim chief, one of the things that Chief Fannick promised was he would be into this the same way we're into it. So I'll turn it over to you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to also thank all the other directors. No, this isn't something that the Honolulu Police Department does on its own. Our, while our primary mission is to keep the public safe, it's through creating partnerships, not only with the community, but also other city agencies, really in an effort to enhance the quality of life in the community. It's not enough just to arrest people and put them behind bars and keep crime down, but it's really in an effort to make people be able to feel safe where they live, because there's people who live in Chinatown, definitely where people work. I mean, it's an economic hub for the entire city. And also where people enjoy all of the different businesses. You know, Dr. Ireland shared a story on some personal stories. I remember when I was a, a youngster and even when I had kids of my own, we would regularly go to Chinatown and enjoy some of the produce that you can't find anywhere, the fresh produce you can't find anywhere else. My daughter, when she was going to Kamehameha Schools, they would regularly have their um, their Christmas concerts over at, you know, Hawaii Theater. So it's a very, very special place, full of history and culture. And that's something that the department holds very special. It, it's a very special place that we know we need to keep safe and we're committed to doing that. But we found that it's not only through enforcement of laws, but it's also through community outreach. And when we approached it using that two-pronged approach, we found greater success, as do many other departments across the nation. So I'd like to introduce you to Major Calvin Sung. He is the Commander of the District One, which Chinatown and the downtown area falls under. And he is spearheading our efforts to make sure that we are doing everything that we can to keep Chinatown safe. So without further ado, I'd like to.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Hey, Chief. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Um, HPD like to highlight uh, several ongoing HPD programs in Chinatown. Uh, first program is the Weed and Seed Program with the Prosecutor's Office. So as you can see it on the slide, uh, the HPD and Prosecutor's Office started this Weed and Seed Program uh, back in July of twenty twenty-one. And then successfully arrested and charged over two hundred cases in total with this program. Uh, biggest success with this program is setting a high bail for misdemeanor offenders and also charging felony offenders and getting them off the street. So I can give you one example is a HPD officer arrests someone for using crystal meth out on the street. In the past, the offender, the offender was arrested but was released pending investigation. So he or she will be right back out on the street, possibly committing other crimes. So but now with this Weed and Seed Program with the Prosecutor's Office, narcotic offender will be charged with the high bail and off the street at least until the next court hearing. So that's one of the biggest uh, success with this Weed and Seed Program. The other very successful program is the Chinatown COVID-nineteen Prevention Task Force, so short for CCPTF. Uh, in July twenty twenty-one, uh, city allocated uh, funding from the CARES Act to provide additional police presence in Chinatown, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. So team of a supervisor and six officers are dedicated to Chinatown foot patrol duties. They closely interact with the community members and Chinatown businesses and take necessary law enforcement actions.
If I just may, check, that's um, that's four teams, six hours each to get that twenty-four, seven. So we had twenty-eight officers involved on the street, supervisor and six patrol officers. And one of the things that we asked the police department cooperated with is we wanted experienced police officers as well. People could deal with the issues front, you know, front and center when, when, when confronted by them.
Thank you. Um, just please take a look at that, the stats from July to December twenty twenty-one. The officers uh, gave over twenty-one thousand warnings. Officers gave over one thousand citations. And also they made over a hundred fifty arrests in Chinatown. And also we got about ninety-five homeless individuals. They were referred to Honu and also the shelters. And so they are out of the street. So that was one of the big things officers conducted. And not only the task force officers did the enforcement, but the task force officers assisted with the Queens and Straub Mobile Vaccination Clinic. And they provided over six hundred COVID vaccination within the Chinatown community. And also they worked with the Hawaii National Guard and provided over four thousand four hundred rapid COVID tests at the Chinatown substation also. Next slide. Um, and also the, you, you can probably see it on the slide, there are noticeable differences and improvement in reported crimes in Chinatown. Uh, you can compare like January to June, uh, first half of the twenty twenty-one and also the second half of the twenty twenty-one, July to December. The burglary, there was a, about. The burglary, there was about twenty-three percent decrease in burglary cases. We had eighteen percent decrease in liquor offenses. We got about sixty percent, sixty percent decrease in the miscellaneous crimes. A lot of miscellaneous crimes are related to homelessness because they sometimes sleep in the sidewalk, or their front doorsteps, or they yelling and screaming on the sidewalk or something like that. Those are the we consider as a miscellaneous crime. And there's a sixty percent decrease from first half of the 2021 to the second half of the 2021 because of the more additional officer presence in Chinatown. And also you can take a look at that thirty-one percent decrease in threatening cases. We got thirteen percent decrease in the unauthorized entry into the motor vehicle. Basically, that's a car break in. During the same period, you, we saw the increase in the number of the warrant arrests by thirty-two percent. And also the drug cases increased by about eighty-six percent. Because these cases are generally initiated by the police officer who are arresting individuals with outstanding warrants. And also they actively investing in the illegal drug cases in Chinatown.
If you take this slide, if you can remember that word slide, and all the issues are up there about scary and dangerous, unsafe, you know, this goes directly at that. Okay? And again, you know, this is only, only was only the last, was only six months from July to December. And we're in process right now during this year as well, because this whole thing is ongoing.
Yes, sir. And then also this slide, I actually had all the breakdown, how many COVID tests was given, vaccination, Hono program referrals, how many warnings and citation arrests was made, and that there's all the breakdown. So I'm not going to spend too much time on this.
No, in fact, all this information is available to you. I want to know. Honolulu.gov/mayor. 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 Click on the Chinatown banner and all of this, this whole packet of information we're sharing with you tonight is readily available for you to see it. So, look, you know, there's a lot, lot to be said about, you know, numbers, if you will, the reality of them. And I think this is a great beginning. We're looking at it as a beginning, but we see it having, starting to manifest itself. Because with this kind of police activity, you know, it is really making it more and more difficult for some of these people to do what they were doing, especially in the area of drugs and narcotics. But are we finished with that? No, we're going to still have a ways to go, and we know that. So this is a tough fight we have on our hands, but we're, as I said earlier, we're taking this not only seriously, we're fighting back in a tough way as well. Okay, thank you, Major. Anything else?
Nope, we got the outreach one. And then District One also conducts outreach program with the community social services partner, such as Institute for Human Services, Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center, and also we work with the state homeless office also too. So this outreach effort is definitely increased with the Chinatown Task Force. And our main outreach goal is get the homeless people off the street and get them into the shelters where they can get the additional social services and medical help. With the task force team support, we're able to transform River Street, Sanyasen Mall, and also we'll continue work with Monica Street, Hawaii Street, and also the Beretania Park area also too. One way, the next slide, probably going to highlight that, one way to keep the criminals away is keeping the community nice and clean also. So community can report the unsightly graffiti to HPD by phone. HPD graffiti hotline at eight oh eight seven two three three four seven five, and also online at HPDHonoluluPD.org, and then they can report it online also too. And our HPD community policing team has been working with the Chinatown community groups, putting together community cleanup events to make the cleaner Chinatown, which will attract, definitely attract more tourists and businesses into Chinatown. As you saw, saw earlier slides, we already had successful community cleanup in August 2021. And also we had a graffiti paint-up in November 2021. And there will be another graffiti paint-up event in Chinatown this Saturday from nine AM in morning and then till noon. And we're going to be meeting at the Union Mall. So definitely, please come on down this Saturday if you want to help clean up Chinatown.
Major Sung, the target is what, we're going to do ten buildings we'll probably get to?
Yes.
We did ten before. What I've really been encouraged by is at least, I can't tell you two or one, but to a number of them, where I saw the extensive cleanup, the graffiti has not resurfaced. It's just, I've been really encouraged by that. Because that's always that problem. You clean something up and then somebody comes along and they get back at it. So it's, it's a big deal. This is a very, a very big thing on the aesthetics.
Yeah. Oh, before I go, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Yuxin Ting and Chinatown Chamber of Commerce for volunteering their time all the time for all these community cleanup event. And Ms. Chulun Quap and Chinese Business and Community Association for contacting all these private building owners and getting their permission to paint up their, the buildings. And also the other community leaders, like Mr. Eric Wong, always being supportive of HPD and our effort to make the Chinatown more safer.
Yeah. And that's a great way for all of you to contribute and support. I mean, Chulun's been great, and a number of you have. And Major Sung just acknowledged that getting some of the people, because these buildings are partly out, to allow us to do that as well. And so we appreciate and need that cooperation. So, great. Thank you, sir. Thank you. So our last apartment right now that we want to come up is, you know, I don't know how many times I've said Chinatown is a gem, Chinatown is a treasure. You've heard even Chief Vanek a few moments ago, but it's been said throughout, it's a place of great history. It has its legacy and incredible culture. And so I'm very proud of Makonani Salam as our director of on cultural affairs. You also heard us talk tonight about activating and humanizing and doing different things. And we think the input here of, of culture and arts and the support of it down there is also going to go a long way in improving the quality of life. So with that, Makonani.
Allah, everyone. Thanks for holding on for the past hour and fifteen minutes. I will be as brief as possible and speak in wide swaths.
Best of the last, Makonani.
Okay. So when we think about sort of the best Chinatowns in the world, and for me, one of them is San Francisco, we always think about something distinctive, right? So one of our major goals was to create distinctive, visible wayfinding boundaries in Chinatown. And as we've tried to do that over the past year, we've tried to do that through installing public art. And we found that because our Chinatown is so special, and not just our Chinatown proper, but also the neighboring Merchant Street Historic District and the Capitol District, we are up against a ton of rules that sort of prevent us from breaking the historical character and sanctity of these buildings. So what we've done instead of sticking to the existing boundaries is started to push out a little bit more to the periphery. And so in this sort of repivoting, we are aiming to have our first public installation in Chinatown in Fort Street Mall. We are hoping to be able to put out a RFP by the end of the year. So look forward to that. Obviously, that's going to come hopefully from a bunch of artist cohorts in Chinatown itself. Sort of on the heels of, of creating visible boundaries is the fact that we can't really do that visually. But what we can do is leverage technology to help sort of mitigate this factor. And so one of the things that is going on already with the State Foundation of Culture and the Arts and Hawaii Theater for Youth is a virtual reality, augmented reality that will bring the historical aspect of certain historical buildings and significant places in Chinatown to life. So we are trying to tag on to that technology. But the thing that we also want to add to is the fact that we can make it economically sustainable for businesses. So how do we take this historical aspect, do a sort of walking tour of Chinatown, where you can also get a reservation at this restaurant and buy tickets to the theater show that night? Right? So this is obviously going to be a much longer project, and it's something that's going to be at least the next few years in talks. But it's something that we're really excited about. I think the third thing that Culture and the Arts is really responsible for is sort of, you know, having the feel of Chinatown. It's the intangible thing that Culture and the Arts brings, right? It's the, it's the magic of being in Chinatown, going, having dinner with your family and seeing a show, checking out some of the cool art exhibitions, and that really comes through events. And so unlike a lot of the other industries, the creative industry has been hit really, really hard by COVID. And so where part of the thing of Chinatown was you would go here for an event, for a street closure, for First Friday. For the past two years, we haven't been able to do that. And so what our office is really trying to do is partner with organizations in Chinatown to reinstate these events. There are a ton of people wanting to throw great events that are going to be arts focused, that are going to support restaurants, support merchants, support all of the economic activity that we're trying to restart. And again, the work that all the directors before me have done is really setting the stage so that now Chinatown is in a position where people can come back and really build and make Chinatown what it should be, which is a place for local people to live, to work and enjoy, and to be safe to bring your families.
And so I would be remiss if I didn't say to take it really close to home and personal with respect to commitment. You see down there, Creative City. It's an entity created by my wife Karen Chang, who's on this call, and her partner, Amyana Mizu. And they were, and we had to unfortunately not really cancel but postpone because of COVID, our plans to do something. But that's a name you'll hear a lot about in the, in going forward, because it really is going to be a combination of raising monies in the private sector to stage really high quality events in Chinatown, along with all the other things that are going to happen. So we talk about this on a regular basis at my house, but I just want you to know, it doesn't get any deeper than that, and we're real sincere about it. So, look, I think we've got some time for questions. We went twenty minutes long. I told you upfront, if there's any questions, and I do want to turn to Councilwoman Fukunaga, let me just say that I hope that what you've just experienced for the last hour and twenty minutes, and thank you, by the way, Makonani, is an understanding of how not only comprehensive our efforts are right now, but this is a complex situation. It's not easily solved. I think we've told you about River of Life. I do want to hear from Councilwoman Fukunaga, if you don't mind, and everything else that we've talked about. And we certainly won't answer any questions. But we are, I want to say it again, as I said in the beginning, we are committed to this. And we don't use that word loosely, as I said. And hopefully tonight, I think this is unprecedented, you've seen firsthand from everybody that's here, including our police department, evidence of that. So Councilwoman Fukunaga, is there anything you'd like to say? I know we've got your name up there on the resolution, on Reso 2232.
Just a real brief thank you for this very comprehensive report and making the information available to everyone. We encourage people to take a look at Resolution 2232 and look to see how soon we might be able to make other changes to the Chinatown Special District laws, so we can really help revitalize Chinatown. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think at this point, we'll just ask if there's any questions. We want to be sensitive to everybody's time. We've kind of cut into the dinner hour. Everybody is here. I can bring anybody up. They've all stayed. Senator Rose, I should also ask you, sir, is there anything you'd like to say? You have your hand up as it is. I'm glad to see you. I didn't see you early. I wasn't sure if you were on the call.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the invitation. Thanks for the comprehensive report and for committing to, to really trying to help in Chinatown. And I think you can already see some of the results. And obviously, we have a long way to go, but you know, you got to start somewhere. Just a couple of comments and a question. So on the state side, we have passed over the last few years pretty comprehensive changes in the, in the mental illness laws. And I hope you guys will take a look at the Assistant Community Treatment Act for people who are not so bad that they need to be committed to the state hospital, but who are mentally ill and are a potential danger themselves or others. The entities that have standing to bring a petition on their behalf is very broad. It's any interested party, which can include the city and county, of course. And in fact, in the past, you guys have helped out with IHS with attorneys and stuff. The other thing, it's a minor thing that I would point out, but for activation of Ala Park, which actually does get quite a bit of legitimate traffic, I can see it from where I'm sitting here. The skateboard park in particular gets used a lot. But that parking lot there does not, there are no parking meters. And so you get people who just come and park there all day. So that's something you might want to just take a look at. The question was, I didn't quite hear everything on Smith-Beretania. I think I must have missed something critical. So if someone wouldn't mind going back over your plans for that, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you for, thank you for being able to speak here for a sec.
Laura, do you want to come up on that? We're going to bring up, we're going to bring back Laura. Look, Jim Ireland, Dr. Ireland, Senator Rose was giving me a thumbs up on the mental illness. We're very aware of that. And I want to underscore Dr. Jim Ireland, who also runs our EMS. And we, so we're very aware of any and all legislation involved in this, and we want to be very sensitive to it, use it to our advantage. Smith-Beretania Park.
Thank you for the question, Senator Rose. We would love to find a partner for Smith-Beretania Park, similar to how we're working with Trust for Public Land and American Savings Bank on activating Ala Park. Again, the, the studies show that the things that will draw people into the parks the most is going to be supervised activities. So we work with a lot of partners through adopt a park programs to be able to support supervised activities into the parks. And so if any of you folks are interested in doing that, we restarted the Adopt a Park program under this administration, I'm happy to say. So we would welcome any inquiries from folks.
I think we're taking a look at the basketball courts too, right? From the standpoint of they, they're not used, you know? And whether or not we might replace those with pickleball courts, because if I get one more request as mayor to build pickleball courts, I can't tell you. The whole world is in love with pickleball. It's stopped everywhere.
Two hundred pickleball courts, so.
The basketball court used to be used quite a lot, and there are still, there's still a clientele for it. But pandemic didn't help anything. And then having homeless people hanging around all around it doesn't help anything either.
Well, I'm not saying we do that. We're looking at it, because what we want to do is activate. You know, what are people going to do? And, you know? Maybe some of those basketball players could learn how to play pickleball. I mean, what can I tell you? Okay. Any other, any other questions? Thank you, sir. Any other questions for anybody? Chulun. Shout her hand up. Yep, Chulun, we got to get you unmuted. Yeah.
Okay, I'm on. And thank you so very much for this comprehensive, transparent, and exciting going forward. And I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you to every one of you. And we have seen some visible changes, and people are very excited by your program. And also you're very capable and committed directors. I have been working with city government for a long, long time. And this is the first time that I feel confident that we're going to see progress for real. And it's not just political statement. It's just not like talking out of both sides of the mouth, but it is actually seeing things done. And I personally am very excited. I was going to retire, giving up, but then when you guys came on, I said, well, I'm going to stay and help out as best I can. And I want to leave other people time to answer questions, but I am excited. And I'm looking forward, and many people share my feelings about hope and the realization that Chinatown is a jewel and that we will all appreciate it. And this is a great moment in history and, and legacy for our next generation and generations enjoy. So I will leave it at now. Thank you so much.
Well, Chulun, I thank you for that. And I understand, you know, your legacy in Chinatown, hearing that from you means a great deal. And I can only tell you, I want to, I want to say and acknowledge again, this is a team of extraordinary people. Not only are they talented, but they also share in this commitment. We recognize that we're at a pivotal moment in our history. This pandemic has created a psychological oppression unlike anything any of us have been through before. And we understand the fundamental need to create hope. And we also understand the latent need to do that in Chinatown. So all I could tell you, Chulun, is that I have a hard enough time speaking out of the front of my mouth. I don't know how to talk out of both sides of my mouth. So you're not going to have to worry about that. What we say is what we mean, is what we will do. Okay? And I thank you for your support. Coming from you, that means a great deal.
Thank you so much. I mean it too.
Thank you. So Jocelyn McMahon, I think, has her hand up. Is that, or is that what I read? No? No, she's saying no. Okay. All right, does somebody? Yeah. Can we? We're going to unmute. Who are we unmuting, Greg? Lee Stack.
Hi, my name?
I can, we can hear you. I don't see you.
Can you hear me? Yes, I'm being incognito.
Okay.
It's a bad hair day, what can I say? So first of all, I really appreciate your commitment and the commitment of your department heads. And it seems very sincere. I, I, I'm wondering about the task force, because I think that would be a good way to bring in more of the community voices. So that was my question. It's, you were talking about a task force, and I don't know that one has materialized.
Well, yeah, we're all having a little trouble trying to understand the question of the task force. What, what are we?
Well, I was just wondering if, I heard at the beginning of your administration that people were making nominations for a task force, and they were coming up with names, and there would be a task force of stakeholders. of stakeholders who would sort of work with the administration. And, uh, as far as I know, that hasn't happened. I mean, I'm not questioning your guys' dedication. You're doing a great job. But I also think it's good to have citizen participation from some kind of task force. That's why.
Okay, I'll tell you what, we, we'll take this as the recommendation and an action that we'll take, because I've said it a couple of times tonight when some of the directors were talking. We need inclusion. We need your help. I asked it about the trees. I asked it about the graffiti. I said it several different times. We certainly engage on these cleanups that we've done, and even Major Sung just talked about the graffiti cleanup Saturday. We want involvement. So if we have not formalized that, we will. Okay?
Okay, great.
Thank you. I appreciate that. We have Ben Gutierrez from, are you still working on Hawaii News now, Ben Gutierrez?
Yes, I am. I'm, I'm still here.
That's good. I know that you are, because I see you every day.
All right. Appreciate it. Two quick questions. One of them, um, River of Life Board, uh, it was announced tonight that, uh, there will cease feeding operations on March thirty-first. Is that basically a hard and firm date? And also is the city still working with them on trying to find the hubs, basically? Because they said that they were gonna be moving to feeding hubs.
Well, okay, well, I'm, I'm getting from Anton, that's, that's hard and firm on March the first. In fact, he was told me last night right after their board meeting, so you can go with that. And then secondly, um, you know, we'll assist where we can. We wanna be cooperative, but it's not predicated on us delivering that for them. They had their own designs on their ministry, on how they wanted to administer that on a going-forward basis. So we have not come up with an alternative hub for them per se. Uh, and that's not high enough priority, because they had already were down the road on what they wanted to do. And, because we've been having the conversations since the entire time we've been in office. I'm very, I'm very pleased we were able to do this, by the way. This is no small event, you know, and, and I, I have a tendency, probably not to brag as much as we probably should for our team, but this is a major accomplishment. This is going to bring with it, you know, a great development and, and everything we've talked about tonight across the board. It's really gonna be significant. So.
Yeah. And just one more thing, and that is, um, last night there was, um, uh, a stabbing on the River Street side. I know that, uh, HPD has, uh, the figures, the crime has gone down, but there are still, I guess, areas that are not safe. There's a lot of cameras up by Winston-Halle. Um, what can, I mean, this, as you said, is the beginning of making people feel safe.
See, if you wanna come up, or Major, look, Ben, what I said sometimes, you know, some of these stuff, you know, we, we're trying to do as much with police presence as we possibly can. But everybody knows if something's gonna happen, it could still happen, no matter how many police we have out in the streets and stuff. That's sort of the nature of it. It's not even an excuse. It's just a reality. And but part of it is getting that element out of there and not around to commit those things.
Yeah, exactly what the mayor said. It's very true. Thank you, Ben, for that question. You know, our officers are there twenty-four seven, and it's not just these task force officers, but it's also our officers on the road. It's our fourth watch officers. It's our crime reduction units, plainclothes officers that people may not even see. It's our community policing teams. We have a large commitment to making sure that we keep our public safe. But despite that, what the mayor pointed out is crime is going to occur. But the worst thing we can do as a police department, uh, for our community is just give up. It's, you know, because, just because crime occurs, it doesn't mean that we're not going to lessen our commitment to the area. We still wanna make sure that we're doing everything that we can and reduce the amount of crime that we are seeing in the community. I think based on the presentation that, uh, Major Sung gave, you can see dramatic decreases in a number of different areas. But, you know, unfortunately, crime is going to occur. But what I can assure you is that we're not going to lessen our commitment to making sure that we do the best job that we can to keeping that community safe.
Yeah, and I wanna say something else. We haven't really talked very much about it tonight. We did showcase Weeden Seed, but one of the things that's broken down in other cities and problems we had here in the past, to be very honest with you, is the failure of the prosecutor's office to back up and support the police department, which is why we've been very supportive of Weeden Seed and with Steve Arm, because we need that enforcement end of it as well. It's one thing for these men and women to arrest people and then just have it go nowhere. So we're playing hardball here, and I really appreciate the fact that Steve is taking that tough approach, understands the benefit of it, and that's what we're doing. And that's also, maybe we should have underscored that more tonight. That's also a big part of this, of removing people physically from Chinatown, uh, because of the repercussions once they've been arrested on a felony. Okay?
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Ben. The Shade Institute is. Yeah. Johnny May Perry. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, for giving me the opportunity to speak. Uh, just two comments. You know, in Waikiki, there's a regular, um, maintenance department besides the city that takes care of the business area. Perhaps something like that can be done in, in Chinatown more on a regular maintenance basis. Um, and also maybe a community garden in Ala Park. I worked in Honolulu back in the seventies, and I see Chinatown now. It's pitiful. Um, in, in past administration, it's cosmetics. Then they go away, they, they stop taking care of Chinatown. It needs to have a regular, consistent maintenance system in place, not just using tax money because, and federal money because it's there. It needs regular maintenance and monitoring so, uh, for it to be successful. Because now, where, when I pass it, it's really pitiful, pitiful, pitiful. But thank you to you and all your department heads in making a difference in Chinatown. And thank you to the, the, um, Neighborhood Board Chair. She really on it all the time. I guess this, the Chinese are being persistent and not taking no. Thank you.
That's good. I'm used to that. I live with that. I understand that. Look, you're talking about the Waikiki Business Improvement District Association, which is a private sector, you know, where the hotels participate. And quite honestly, you know, when you think about Kalakau Avenue and Kualio Avenue during, um, uh, while tourism is coming back, it's a hundred thousand people a day. The wear and tear, we can't keep up with that. You heard Don Subcheck talked earlier about we've increased the amount of street washing and whatever else. But I think as we begin to populate, activate, as you heard tonight, with a lot more activity and people going there, we may want to, once we get the mindset, if you will, because as we talked earlier tonight and talked about the businesses down there, they felt they were in a war zone. Once we can create some real comfort there, I think we can talk to them about a public-private sector cooperative that will allow us to augment everything we do in the city to help improve what you're suggesting. And the idea of a community park is also a wonderful thing, but I, but that's, that's gonna take some money, it's gonna take some involvement, but I think hopefully we can gain or regain the confidence of some of those businesses down there, because the one thing that we do know, the people who are there love being there. And our survey of the businesses, they love to operate out of Chinatown. They just want it to be the place it needs to become. Noe Tanagawa has her hand up and. Well, let's go Shade Institute first, I guess. Yeah. Yeah, you got it? I think you have to unmute yourself. Yeah, same thing. No, you have to un, you have to unmute. Noe. Yeah. She raised her hand.
Virtually on that.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know if you can hear us at the Shade Institute. Yeah, can, can you hear us? You could unmute. Noe's unmuted. Go ahead, Noe. We'll, we'll come back to the Shade Institute. Nice to see you again. Oh, it's still not coming through. Well, you're not muted on the system. For some reason, we can't get you, Noe. Sorry. Is your mic, is your microphone working? Can you hear us? Yeah. I'm sorry. I don't think that's on our end. I, I, it's not on our end. Yeah. Yeah, the guy at the Shade Institute, I think his picture is frozen, because he hasn't moved either that, or he stares really well. There he is. He's waving. He's waving now. Okay, all right, okay.
Tell him on his end, he's to unmute.
Yes, you need to unmute, sir. On your end. He's got his hands up in the air. Okay. I'm sorry. Is there any, is there anyone else, Greg, in the queue? It's all the hands raised. Well, look, it's after seven o'clock.
I'm unmuted. I'm unmuted.
You figured it out. All right. All right.
All right, Mayor Blangiardi, this is Dean Sakamoto. You know me.
I know you, Dean Sakamoto.
Oh, yeah, okay. And, and thank you so much. I echo the sentiment from Chulun uh, and everyone else here that, uh, you know, everything that went on tonight was music to my ears. Uh, again, I'm, I'm the executive director of Shade Institute, which is a public interest design charitable foundation. I do this in addition to my job as an architect. And, uh, Shade Institute was involved in Chinatown, uh, as early as two thousand fifteen, uh, helping, uh, the community to get ready for the TLD, for the, the, for the, the rail project. Uh, but, you know, we hit a political speed bump, uh, and the Blangiardi administration now is, I think, the answer to uh, flattening that speed bump. And I just wanted to say that, you know, hearing from the, uh, eight or so department heads is really great, because from my experience in working with communities, you are doing all the right things in making it safer and more sanitary to get to what, what we do at Shade, which is planning and design, right, with community. We do community-based planning and design with our, uh, interns and our fellows and our professional mentors, um, as a charitable foundation. So, uh, you're setting the stage for what you need to think about in the future, which is planning, uh, and designing a better Chinatown. So, uh, we, we, uh, work in an inclusive manner. Uh, and, you know, we've been working with, uh, actually talking with the Chinese Chamber of Commerce uh, as a partner organization to bring commerce, uh, uh, and, uh, the government together, uh, to make a better Chinatown. So we look forward to, uh, uh, working with you, um, Mayor Blangiardi, and also with Creative City, uh, to make a better Chinatown. So thank you very much for all you're do, all that you're doing, and, uh, we're standing by.
Thank you, Dean. I know you hold the bar very high, so it's a great compliment coming from you. I'm very proud of our team. And I'm really hoping that everybody tonight really got the sense that, um, not only do we mean business, but you can count on, we're holding ourselves accountable to you and to each other to continue our progress. So thank you very much. Is there anybody else? Anyone? Okay, well, then on that note, as I started to say, thank you for all the time you've given us. It's been an hour and forty-five minutes. We appreciate all of you. We will do this again, as Mike suggested earlier tonight. Since it's been a year or so, uh, coming up, we're gonna do another walkthrough. We continue to evaluate, and we continue to evolve in this process. Ask you again for your patience. Ask you again for your cooperation. But more than anything, I thank you for, for caring about this place, loving this place, and helping us make it even better. Thank you all. Good night.